Well, I'll just roll call and then I'll introduce.
Okay.
Okay, so. I probably just to why I can say to the public, which is that's the foundation under this. They're being just so.
Thank you.
We see.
Yeah.
Mr. Butler.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Brown is absent. Mr. Helmer.
Yes.
Mr. Ireland.
Here.
Just Dennis.
Yes.
Denise Webster here and Mr. Our new member, Mr. McFadden.
Welcome, Steve. So. Maybe this point we do this. I don't introduce ourselves as Steve McFadden.
Oh.
He's our newest deputy on the planning commission. He's a former architect, would you say?
Retired architect.
Retired architect.
I moved here August, well, July, retired August first.
So you're 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 our resident now?
Yeah, absolutely.
And welcome. So I'm Dave Ily. I know we met briefly at the at the board meeting where I appointed, but I'm the chair of the planning commission. And I'd like to have you here.
I'm Ken Butler. I'm a retired attorney and I live here in Polk. You're also a box commissioner, also a park commissioner. Two heads.
Uh, Denise Webster retired in twenty, moved down here in fall of twenty. On the Board of Review, zoning Board of Appeals and as a planning commission member.
And on our Blue Star Highway.
Oh, yeah, the Blue Star Highway committee.
Yes.
Okay. Gordon Stennis and I'm Savannah. I'm an industrial designer and a pretend architect. I've been on the committee for a couple of years. We met, I'm trying to help right come on with how to support. Pointed you and then I pledged to swear you in and then we could never get any further. So I'm the board rep. And you asked if I would be born. So.
It should have been your last year.
That's how it's.
It gave you.
Not taking a meeting in a while is very rare for us. Never happened.
I'm the A. I'm.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I'm the planning staff person. Um, I am based in Brad Rapids. I own a planning firm and I'm here in the office on Tuesdays from about nine to one. Except on days when I have planning commissions, then I come in at the afternoon. Stay through.
And I'd like to thank you personally for helping move my house. I think my takeaway from you was we just wanted to make that I.
All right.
You got Morgan behind you?
It's good. I'm just Morgan.
No, no.
I have a recording secretary for y'all.
Beautiful. Morgan, be Morgan.
Yes. All right, well, let's get well. Uh, so now we'll move on to the agenda from the last meeting, which was May twenty first. No, no, that's.
Approval agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, approval of the agenda. I got a few about agenda.
Yes.
Rather.
All right, so I, are there any comments or changes or any additions to the agenda for this evening? At this point, I'll approve.
Uh, second.
Second, those are favor. All right, bye. Thank you. All right, now we'll go on to the minutes from May twenty first. Uh, so starting with, uh, so Steve, so you had gotten a copy of the minutes in your packet, which I may say. Wouldn't have been here. Uh, we'll go through it and we just kind of review what was written down in a fairly quick pace. And you kind of expect everyone just to read through it ahead of time to make their comments. And if there are any changes that come up, whether it's through wording, spelling errors, whatever, we'll bring them up at this time and make note of it. And then report a team that approved them with. So, uh, as far as page one, anyone that has any comment, changes, no. Page two. Page three.
Until.
Support, all those are favor. Bye bye. Thanks. Through, thank you. All right, so then we'll move on to public comment. So, uh, so at this time, uh, we'll open it up to public comment. Uh, anyone that wish to speak has three minutes. Uh, there's no one in the audience. Uh, if you represent a group, you have five minutes to speak, but this the, uh, uh, your time to speak on, you know, whatever you have with the, uh, any issues in there or concerns or comments with a township. Uh, there. The, uh, site plan review day. That won't have a public. No, okay. So, yeah, if you have any comments or anything on any of the new business items other than, uh, there's a public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment. But, uh, but if it's regarding the brewery plant approval, that would be a good time to speak. So at this time, I open it up for public comment and I'll go right to Zoom to see if anyone would like to speak on Zoom. No, okay. All right, then I'll close public comment and we will move on to new business. So the first item in new business is the electing officers for the year twenty twenty four, twenty five. Uh, this time I currently myself as a chair, Jackie Graham as the vice chair and Denise Webster as as secretary. Is there, uh? Special, he has any concerns? Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure Denise is okay with it. Yeah, okay.
And I'd like to move that we reappoint, uh, Dave Ily as chair, Jackie Graham as vice chair, Denise Webster the secretary to our planet. Uh, planning commission for another year term. Or.
Okay, I guess we should do a. Roll call. Should we do it?
Do you want to roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Homer.
Yes.
Mr. Ireland.
Yes.
Mr. Stanis.
Yes.
Uh, Denise, yes, Mr. McFadden.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Now we'll move on to item B, the public hearing consideration of a zoning ordinance amendment, article five, section five point two. Uh, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, I think, which I was not at. Uh, but so I'll kind of pass this one on to you and I, if you want to lead us into it.
Hey, um, I did include a memo there, but at the May meeting, we talked about the critical dune overlay. I provided an analysis that, um, of the current critical dune ordinance and provisions and regulations and the ordinance, uh, the former ordinance, the current ordinance, as well as what is allowable, um, given the rules and regulations of Eagle and how they handle the oversight of critical dune areas. And as a planning commission, you decided that, um, because Eagle regulates critical dunes, the only way for the township to to regulate them would be to have and adopt the ordinance by Eagle, also have the expertise and the kind of background and and experience and knowledge base to regulate critical dunes to the extent that Eagle does that. There are only, I believe, two townships or municipalities in the whole state of Michigan with critical dunes that do their full review. Otherwise Eagle handles that. So the planning commission, um, recognized that Eagle has that jurisdiction and that Eagle should continue that jurisdiction, meaning that we need to remove the language in our ordinance related to oversight of critical dune areas and recognize that Eagle is handling that. So, um.
So let me, there's, there would be no advantage to us having the overlay for a couple of reasons. One is we couldn't be more restrictive than they are.
Correct.
So we couldn't actually do anything more. And we would have to have expertise on staff, on salary, that would basically become. Spend a lot of time, energy and money. We're doing a lot with Eagles, right?
Correct.
There's no compelling reason to do it.
We did talk about exploring standards for high risk erosion areas. And I did receive some public comment from a resident in a high risk erosion area, which is the Lake Shore area. Everything south of the mouth of the river basically is high risk erosion on Lake Michigan. And, um, I need, I want to spend time in the next few weeks when I'm here, uh, learning more about the potential for that. Um, this community member is also looking at some best practices of other Lake Shore communities that have high risk erosion areas. Because there could be the potential that we have more in our ordinance about those areas versus the critical dune areas. But both are very sensitive. There are, you know, spaces are. So, so for those reasons, we work with the township attorney, um, and created this text amendment which modifies and removes the critical dune from the overlay table as well as the text amendment language. So this is a public hearing. We noticed it in the newspaper. We posted it as required. This would require, um, the planning commission to recommend this change.
Well, I think I tend to agree with Gordon's sentiments.
First, you don't want to open the public hearing first.
Oh, that's true. You do need.
Yes, so you open the public hearing and then have that closed it then.
Yeah. Uh, so at this point, we'll open up the public hearing. Uh, so if there's anyone that would like to speak regarding, uh, this ordinance, uh, yeah, the amendment, the ordinance amendment, uh, this would be the time you have three minutes to speak. If you speak on behalf of the group in five minutes, uh, I don't see anyone in the in the crowd here, so we'll move to Zoom.
So anybody want to talk on Zoom?
No. No.
At this point, we'll close public comment. Thanks for keeping me asked. Okay, so then, uh, I guess I would start with saying that I I tend to agree with Gordon's sentiments for it's really nothing that we can do above and beyond what Eagle, uh, is already required to do. And I like the idea that you're evaluating the high risk areas for high risk, high erosion risk areas, uh, especially after we had those high water levels on the lake shore and all those people were dealing with heavy erosion. And and they were, there were all kinds of random erosion control methods that were being used. And and so there was just no consistency or pattern or, and I'm not sure how many of them even worked, but, uh, but it, I think it's a great idea to evaluate that further. And I'm, I mean, I'm on board with having Eagle be the reviewer, uh, for for anything within the critical.
In fact, I'd like to add pile on that and say accountability. There was randomness that we saw people were panicking. They were, properties were in danger, their homes were in danger. They were driving all sorts of things, but there didn't seem to be any accountability to, okay, once the crisis is over, how do we restore the shoreline so the average person can enjoy it? There are still places where you can't safely walk. Wife got her foot cut up walking on the beach recently. She was limping around with cuts on her feet for a week because there's no accountability for that. So I'd like to see public safety enter into that question as well.
So, um, I think. Mr. Homer, during the beginning of this, there was a seminar last year that I attended online. Um, and to come to the South, we took a break. Jim came up with a very intensive, um, set of rules and regulations for what people can and cannot do as far as, uh, erosion protection. Uh, a lot of it focused on taking away the ability to put either steel or large rocks. Um, because if Lake Michigan decides it wants to grow to there, I really don't care what you put there. It's not going to last. So what a lot of their focus was that usually these high water events are only for like two or three years. So if you have, um, something that is holding sand that will last for that two or three years until the water flow down and then you can cut the bags and you're left with sand or that takes care of itself. So I will get a copy of that ordinance over to you.
Thanks.
Um, because as far as I know, um, I'd like to also follow up to see everything tested.
Isn't that what Douglas Beach did? Didn't they put, uh, something down in Douglas Beach?
Yeah, they did. They made two, the big tubes.
Tubes of sand.
Were they either?
Were the tubes of concrete or tubes of sand?
They do tubes of sand. And I see that, you know, you can remove, you can remove the tube.
Right.
And, you know, after, you know, they last two or three years and you're not stuck with pieces of steel or rock that are thrown all over the place. You're just stuck with microplastics.
So I guess I, we try to bring that up is that we may have a community that it did try to do something in a step. I thought it was Doug's speech. So we might check with Douglas.
And I think this high risk erosion could also speak to just, you know, properties there and, you know, digging into the bluff. Um, you know, plant species that might be appropriate underground irrigation is is, you know, there's other concerns. I think that, uh, block coverage, uh, pay, you know, just all the pavement and and the carrying capacity of that, uh, that edge up there.
And the lake has, somebody was telling me that they found, um, pictures of the area from a hundred years ago and how much further it went out into Lake Michigan. And the natural progression is that the lake keeps dating back.
Goes up and down.
Well, thirty year cycles, it goes high, then it goes low.
You know, but but over a hundred years.
Yeah. The cycles are getting.
The lake, the lake.
But I would give that to you.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I'd like to just make a note because this, I just heard about this, but our state representative for this district, Joey Andrews, and a colleague of his Brad Rapids State, Rachel Hood, have already drafted some new legislation from the state house relative to various dune restoration issues. I haven't seen it, it hasn't been reported on yet, but that's all I've heard. And it's ready to be introduced, so there might be something happen legislatively, which you keep an eye on that could have an impact. And almost with our. That's all.
Great. Uh, let me, uh, on your discussion point, you mentioned the Crosman Properties, where is that?
That is the old, the round house, the original house on the. Okay.
That's.
The real girls. She, Andrea Grossman bought it.
Okay, so where is that now?
Right at the, the.
It's the river.
There.
The big round house.
Okay.
The one that's been there thirty years, north side of the channel.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have some general sense of that, of that.
Yeah.
Scott may not know.
It's not part of, it's not part of, you know, it's not part of North Shore's property.
So there's not, is a, so it's not really the Crosman Properties now, it's the. Genesin.
No, it's Crosman. But.
Okay, all right, I got it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a.
Dennis has a house.
Yeah.
On.
Yeah.
I would add one last thing to this, uh, preservation of high water marks and stuff like that, and that is unfortunate. So if we have a hundred dollar fine for someone who puts a bunch of steel and rock down there randomly, people are going to do what else? I think the bottom penalty has to be commensurate to the damage that is being done. I don't know what the.
Oh, I guess I, I thought I wanted to chase down Chicken Make, they introduced it, they presented it at seminars. Um, and this time I found that what enforcement have you done? Has anybody sued you? You know, has the testimony court, um, that's good for, good for, because, yes, it has to be enforceable.
Standing again, that's on the right track. And I said in a seminar too, and the chicken was the the case study they used as well. And and I think it must have been before you because they were just going through the process of of trying to vet the ordinance and try to, you know, understand what they can do and couldn't do. And so, uh, so they must have progressed since then. And so I think you're on the right track.
How much lake shore do we have under our purview in the critical dune areas on South of the channel? Is it seven miles, four miles?
Oh, I I don't know.
Ballpark.
I don't know our, our dimensions, but it's the entire.
It's from the channel down M eighty nine. Well, that might not be critical.
Meaning section is.
I think this, this is all erosion area here. And this is the critical dune area up in here, part of this that we're not going to, you know, we're not going to touch the critical dune, but we we do have to speak to what people do along the lake because of the, uh, the right of the public to walk along Lake Michigan cannot be interfered with. I'm just pointing out the obvious, like it's not just a.
Four miles.
It's.
Oh, no, no.
It's a lot of us that we are responsible for preserving for the benefit.
And we have our lake shore that either does.
This is the sorry.
Yep. It's a big deal.
Don't say that to our big.
Okay, well, I like to explain on big.
Okay.
You need a motion?
Yeah, I think at this point we've. We're on agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, a motion to approve, uh, the recommendation to, uh, remove, uh, the critical dune overlay, uh, recommended the board, uh, move on that. Yes. Recommended. I have. Um, in order to abolish the critical dune area overlay mystery. Repealing zoning ordinance section five, two zero, mending zoning table twenty two, two point two twenty V and subsections that appear that, um, you know, block two on twenty V one and amending the site of township's only math.
Well said, sport.
Got all that?
It doesn't matter. Okay, it, uh, at this point, there's no comment, yeah. We're all in favor and we just. Yeah.
I.
I.
I I'll say I, but because of what it is, do you want to do a voice forward? Think that you're removing something from it.
Yes, it's a voting change.
All right, so it's. If there's.
Yeah.
Mr. Butler.
Yeah.
Ms. Brown is not here, Mr. Helmer.
Yes.
Mr. Ireland.
Yes.
Mr. Stanis.
Yes.
Webster, yes. Please repeat that.
Okay. Moving on to C, uh, I will, uh, because I am a property owner on this, I am going to recuse myself from this. And, uh, I think we.
Why?
Yeah. I'm back, yeah, I'll just be honest.
All right, we have to present a site plan, um, associated with the two hundred twenty five Blue Star Highway, which is, uh, that if you remember, uh, back in the, there was a brewery in the auto, um, here, and so they brought forward to us a newly planned. So with what you want to do this, might you need to introduce it? Yeah, we were, and then we're allowed, um, I think. Let's go to it.
Okay, okay. So, um, I'm not going to read my report word for word. It was in your package, so hopefully you have time to read and have questions. We can talk through those, but I'll give a high level review. Um, as you know, and as the acting chairman said, the Blue Star Brewery and I'm the advocate have been for the planning commission in the past for a special land use and site plan approval. Um, originally, the brewery was going to be sighted within the auto repair portion of the building and a new building would be constructed for the brewery. They have since decided to flip that. Um, and the me, in in the interim and what happened during that decision making process is we adopted the zoning ordinance. And as part of that, we brought brewery in as a permanent land use. So we no longer have a special land use needed for this type of request. Um, so that said, so we're still dealing with the same partial sixty five twenty five Blue Star. And so C two commercial, it's in our wellhead protection overlay. Um, and just to let you know, the specific standards, um, the vehicle repair is a, it's not a special use, it's a, it's a use with standards. Um, and then we also have other rules and regulations related to architecture, parking, landscaping, lighting, et cetera. So this is our first staff report with our new site plan review standards. So let me know if you have recommendations after this. I'm open to your suggestions. But, um, what the advocate is seeking to do is to prepare in the, um, vehicle repaired building. They have already reached out to our building department and building inspector to make sure that the co-locating those uses in one building is per building code. And of course, nothing will happen or could happen if it doesn't comply with building code standards. That's not our purview or our department. So know that no matter what, they will be complying with building code requirements.
When you, when you said co-locating the same building.
Well, the Ily garage and and Dave's uncle.
Yeah.
He is also a part of that building.
They're going to stay there.
They, they're, uh huh, they're staying in their portion and then Dave's portion would be the brewery.
Thank you.
Yeah. It reads as one building.
Yeah.
Um, so the brewery itself includes the front bar eating area. There's a notch area with outdoor seating. They will have three food trucks on occasion parked in the parking lot. Um, and then the back of that building would be used for the brewing. They will have picnic gathering space. They're going to continue to have the music and outdoor games that they originally, um, included in their submittal as well as fire pits. And I put that subject to approval as well because our fire district, three years ago. Um, the food service would be provided by the food truck, so there's no kitchen associated with this. And initially, they're proposing a seasonal use. Um, the live music is directed away from the residential. It would end at nine o'clock. The brewery would close at ten. We don't set hours of operation with permitted uses. I just wanted to include this in the memo. Before, when it was special use, we had the ability to condition those types of things. So the new building, which is kind of north and east, is the new vehicle repair. Uh, that would be forty eight hundred square feet and it has four, about four hundred square feet of office space. The driveway would be modified and narrowed, um, the current driveway to the auto, uh, portion of the use. And then they do propose that new driveway, uh, to the north on that adjacent house. You'll recall that Dave's uncle owns that. He submitted that approval letter for that curb cut and that driveway to be constructed. That hasn't changed. The road commission has also approved that driveway location. So our zoning ordinance has various standards to review. A couple of comments that I wanted to pull out to you, um, all relate to, um, item B, lighting. We noticed that the light poles are a bit too tall because they're adjacent to residential. Um, the the parcel, this parcel has residential nearby, so those need to be lowered to twenty feet maxima. And that includes the base, so we added that as a condition.
Those existing poles or.
Those are proposed new poles.
So when, in terms of the nearby residences, it's in just that one house? What else is? What else is something that's considered?
The one house, and then this lot itself has commercial and there's residential on it. Currently. Currently.
And of course, I gotta remember that there is a large residential across the street, even though it is across the street, but.
Right.
Again, lighting isn't appropriate, it will spill out.
That's true. No, but I'm not, I'm not aware about the residence. Properties of that one house, but I think it's.
Correct, yeah, but it says zoned or used.
So it's just, oh, okay, no, that makes sense.
You should, oh, the new ordinance three works the hard enough.
I just wish they would include Terry now that.
One.
And then, and then, and then they finish.
Alright.
Yeah, parking is another uh, topic, so. There's kind of a lot of notes here on parking because similar to the previous review, they want to share. Parking with the auto repair, so brewery auto repair share parking. Um. The, a few things to keep in mind, the planning commission can approve shared parking. You have to consider things like industry standards. Multi-purpose visits that people might have, different peak hours of operation, which. Uh, the applicant says would be the case in this instance. So the um, the other part is that a vehicle repair, there are bays internal to the building for, to accommodate some of the vehicles that you would anticipate.
With the. Where the parking garage have the ability to park cars that are sort of in the queue?
Yeah.
In that parking garage.
Yeah, in addition, they're providing parking outside of their business as well as behind it, whose fish are parking. So a restaurant, the restaurant use requires sixty spaces. The, the bar. If you do, our ordinance doesn't have brewery, it has restaurant and it has bar. And the brewery is a little hole because there's a food truck. So what I did, one is sixty spaces, one is eighty, did the, the average of seventy-five. Vehicle repair requires sixteen spaces. So seventy-five plus sixteen is ninety-one. They are providing eighteen space then.
Forty.
They're providing eighty spaces. Um, if you had five food trucks, there would be seventy-five spaces. So they need to share eleven to sixteen spaces.
Hours. See clothes when they're open, right, so.
Yeah, so the um. The vehicle repairs, they're mostly during the hours of seven AM and five PM, Monday through Thursday. And the vehicle repair closes at three on Fridays. The brewery anticipates that they're not gonna hit their peak. Um, until after three, when, you know, afternoon hours into the evening as well as weekends. And the auto repair is not open on weekends. So the standards for shared parking, one is that. The properties must be within six hundred feet of one another, so they meet that. A pedestrian connection shall be provided between the properties, and they have that, so that. The availability of parking for all affected properties and uses shall be indicated by directional signs. I didn't see those specific in the site plan, but I added that as a condition, if you approve this, that they add some. Signs directing people to all the parking and bike. And that vehicular access shall be, shall interconnect on the properties, and that's that. It's actually one property.
Is, is there a way, or is it appropriate to ask the auto repair? Business to do their queue parking in what we're doing, you was like, what's that, for sharing? Right, and then, uh, least desirable. Least pedestrians and all that kind of stuff, you have the ability to request that.
Think you could add that as a condition, is that the, that could be part of the signage, you know, that the auto repair, you know. That they park kind of in the back of the auto repair.
And it wouldn't be a behavior of the auto repair shop, where they're queuing their vehicles, just kind of keep them away so that their. Prime time parking is up front for them. That's great. Good.
Um, we added a condition that they identify where their loading areas are. As well as in the uh, the parking area for the brewery, for sort of a central pod, and it's gravel parking. There are no wheel stops, and we've found that where we have gravel parking lots in the township. Those wheel stops are very important to delineate those spaces because we cannot paint. People are not painting the gravel. Um. We had a comment in here on the site plan about pedestrian pathways and connecting it to the star. There's a pathway from the rear parking lot to the brewery. That appeared to be difficult to access when cars are parked in front of the walkway. Um, and there's also a dumpster in that location, so one of my comments was whether that dumpster could be. Moved and the pedestrian access be, be directed to where that dumpster is located. And the access to the dumpster, the applicant provided in the site plan, some of the turning templates for a um. For a garbage truck, and it appeared that that turning template, that the garbage truck would jump the landscape island, so that was something to review. Um, and discuss with the applicant. The applicant is also seeking a um. Oh, let me continue, so the architecture. Um, there were two exceptions. The canopy on the brewery shall be four feet in depth, I believe they're showing it as three feet. And that the rooftop mechanicals, they are visible, but they are located. Away, they're not, there isn't any residential that's occupied in the area. And the mechanicals are setback from the roadway closer to one hundred and thirty-fifth. They're also painting those earth colors, so that's something to discuss whether the planning commission is okay with that. In terms of the architecture for vehicle repair. Um. The flagpole requirement, it's to be twenty-five feet from the property line. And then, we don't have this, should say offset, not office, but an off cut. The, the building facade with more than a hundred feet in length. And it is a bit of a blank, blank wall. It doesn't face the roadway, however, um, you will probably still see it from Blue Star. But um, in our previous ordinance, we did have some standard about breaking up that plane. We don't have that in the current ordinance, so we can't require it.
So we can't require windows and signs either.
We do have the wrap around the side for the first, I think it was twenty-five feet.
As far as like the length of the building?
No.
We get a requirement.
Not on that side, just on the um, the front edge. Access management, um. This had come up before, but I just wanna make sure that. The hundred and thirty-fifth street connection, it had come up as a comment. Uh, we did not require that there be a connection to one hundred and thirty-fifth. Um, we also don't have the comments from the fire district at this time. Um, they're just, they're backed up, it's, it's their busy season, so, um. I don't have that. The low impact development standards, I just brought up the question, there is that the whole length of the industry on the site. And wondered if it could be used as a parking island. Um, you know, and park around it versus taking it down. Again, it's private property, we don't have an ordinance against it because it's not in buffer, it's just a question. We also noted that the renderings include landscaping in front of the brewery on the side of the brewery, but those landscape, that landscape material is not included in the landscape plan. And then we wanted to make sure the landscape plan mentions underground irrigation being placed. And um, landscaping will be maintained, and any landscaping that goes to establish would be revised. Um, and there's a report from kind of New Hall. Signage, we reviewed that separately, it's typically not something the planning commission reviews in license and plan unit development, or we have a. More of a shopping. Development with multiple users, and we look at the sign plan. And then outside agencies, certainly, um, we'd require that any standards for any requirement from. The health department or road commission or drain commission fire any that prior to um, the building permit being issued. So I guess the top things to talk through would be the shared parking. Um, and if you do allow that, then we would like an agreement on file. Um, that loading bases be identified on the plan and wheel stops placed. We're gonna continue to have that standard about amplified music terminated by nine PM. The light fixtures being twenty feet in height now. Adding parcel dimensions to the site plan. Adding those notes about the landscaping and um. Maybe the applicant can speak to that tree and the um. That aggregate mechanicals be screened from view. That the um, canopy be modified. I should say, it's already four feet in depth.
Just to clarify, when you said mechanicals uh, obscured from here, you read, I know the, the, the C units aren't really bright, but would they be painted?
Yes. And at the aggregate ones, there were some on the north side of the um.
At least.
The building, yeah.
Yes.
The architectural brace, I don't know if that's something they're gonna offer us or not, and as I mentioned, it's not required, but it's a discussion. Signs reviewed at a later date. I also put in here as cited, nominated in the bike path. Um, would need to be added.
What a great upgrade for like that.
And then um. I realized that the. I think we still need to talk about that pedestrian path and where the dumpsters. Yeah, so the rest of the conditions are general, conditions that we, and you with all of our duties.
I guess we'll wait, um. Uh, if you have any questions for Lanay, please write them down, because last the applicant, um, was representing the applicant to present next, uh, since Mr. Butler enters.
So I, I was mistaken, when they go, like, a lot of windows and a lot of silence, the Ily, the whole day. There's not.
Uh.
So it's not, it's still quiet.
No, right, 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 thank you. Yeah. And then the car repair.
Lightning, good thing.
Yeah.
And they have no big base, we lose guy.
The, the short side of the building.
Sure, it's. No, rid of my name, thanks.
And then.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, but okay.
Well, just about, that, I think this is. Makes a lot sense. To, to create an environment like that. I, I've seen with building repurpose these garage buildings repurposed as. Less than some, it's spoken, they're both are really cool by, they. nostalgic stuffs. Um, yeah. It, it wins rationale to share a parking space too. And I, I want a thought, I mean, this, this, to me, this is a much improved plan, yeah, using existing garage buildings.
I'm gonna ask the commissioners to wait then, so it's about.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And no, let it, and allow him to speak because if you made the off. It's gonna hear the whole, whole story.
Good.
So.
We do.
Well. Basically. Okay, so uh, if you could introduce yourself and then we'll go from there.
Alright, uh, I am Bruce Zeezster with Holland Engineering, um, representing um, Mr. Ily and Mr. Iblewrod, who you guys, I haven't met him yet, but. He's kind of working through Lakewood Construction. Um. One of the big reasons why, this is the third reiteration of this project, I'm gonna say, because I don't know if you guys saw the second one. But I just took it over a couple months ago. Um, but one of the big reasons we're switching the uses around is because right now I'll fire it back out, cross the bike path, and it's kind of hard to. To do that, um, safety issues and everything else, and it just made sense for Mr. Ily to build a new building and. Uh, would be a much, much bigger improvement for him and, and how he does his work. Um, I don't know, how much, how much do you guys want, but you've looked at the, the renderings and stuff, is there a reason to go through those again?
I, I would just say if there's something that you know is not obvious that deserves to be called out.
Especially as if you've heard and, and saw the report from Lanay, is there anything that you'd like to?
I'll just go uh, just some of my quick thoughts, um, the existing tree that you talked about, I can take a look at that, I know we're doing some regrading to get the pavement. The, like, in the water flow. There's possibility, and we can discuss moving the dumpster, and I think that tree is right next to where that dumpster proposed. So we can take a look at that. Um, I hate to. You know, say, we can say it right away, but we'll look at it for sure. Um, if like, remove one parking space. But you know, make a, um, island there.
But you're a licensed landscape architect, you're gonna try to save trees wherever you can.
Well, it depends, sometimes it's better to take the old one up, but I'm doing it, so. Uh. I, I don't see anything um, in the nation court that's really an issue, um, we're okay with shortening the light poles if need be. Um, we can identify some loading spaces. Screen chemicals upgrade and upgrade, throw some more trucks around those. Um. I have not proposed a light pole this time, uh, Dave might want to add one next to the building. Where they had shown one in the renderings, this is right, right, I have a nice, name a tree proposed, so they're probably won't go there. Um, and then we can look at signage. Um. I talked to Dave a little bit about pulling off one hundred and thirty-fifth street and. Went back and forth, he kind of likes the idea, but at the same time, it's, it's a little bit of an expense because you gotta do the. Uh, commercial driveway entrance for Aladdin County, you guys require pavement, I believe forty feet from the edge of, of road. So if that's something that's gonna be required by the fire department, we'll probably have to do it. Say, pose in this future. Both you guys have a strong feeling on that, we can talk about some more. Um, and I think if all the other things are, are standard. Um, getting to plan new maps in court. Uh, obviously, we're gonna need all the other industry requirements, uh, he did mention some stuff about the property to the. Uh, the Napa store. Uh, that is not part of the project, it's on a separate parcel, even though the building is. Joined, it's kind of a zero lot line thing there, where there's two buildings buttoning up to each other, um, so that's not part of this project. Um. Other than that, I can answer specific questions if you have them, or we can go through the drawings, renderings, if you want me to point anything out.
Does the, can we have any questions too?
So.
Okay. Alright, so we'll, we'll just have to hold in if there's a, if something that we, we bring up in the discussion, if you want to help explain something, well, I'll ask it.
Okay, I have, I do have a question, but you might not be the person to answer, how, how tall is this? Cause I've been burned, I've seen other people be burnt on the ground, um.
It's on the roof, sorry, uh, uh, thank for the brewery inside of the road. Um. Well.
Yeah, they say that they're.
I guess it's these items here.
Forty-nine inches high, fifty-two inches wide, one-six inch.
Are they existing already or becoming the auto or is it, they would be new?
I will, I'm.
Are they existing?
I believe that they're new. Yeah, they're on sheet seven.
That's okay, it's dependent on forty-nine.
Were you said that's. It's not much.
No. And as a standard.
So I, I, my question would be, this is directed to, do you own a day? We've had problems with shared parking before. And so when you say your, your, that they shared parking agreement. What number of parking spaces are you landing on?
So the shared parking spaces, they would need to share. Well, sixteen spaces.
Okay. And are, are we as a group comfortable that knowing that we have that issue haunting us? Not necessarily this project, but other, other sites that um have become. Somewhat heated and, and they made presentations to us how unhappy they are with shared parking.
So my, my question was the parking and, and I don't have a problem with share, but realizing that, uh, that Auto Stock is. You know, not a great find now, and if you want to, um, also encourage the brewery is could we, um, discuss about a deferred parking? So that if in fact that there's a plan in regards to deferred parking that if in fact they get an overload. Uh, that there is a place that individual they could park, and they're, they're directed to park and they're not going to park on the bike path. Or on Blue Star. Is there some way that we can, uh, at least have a plan for a deferred parking and on that parcels?
You mean that for that?
Yeah. That be included, could we require or request a shared agreement to execute before?
You could ask for that shared parking, um, the agreement to be kind of memorialized and part of, uh. You know, I don't know if it's reported or how it becomes an official document, but for either a building coming into issue. Or for a certificate of documents. So those are usually the two levers that we have, so you could decide which one. One is at the beginning of construction, one's at the end.
Yeah, I, I, I like the idea of having, so like if the brewery is having an event. That has a larger draw, what is their, what is their plan for parking because? Um, we cannot have a parking of, of looks there, that's.
Um, need a personal lead to ask.
Yeah.
My other question with that, and, and the reason why I love the deferred parking is of course. Realizing that this is a family owns this, well, is, you know, that there's that vacant space on. West side of Napa store, but my question also is that driveway that's on the east side. That's on somebody else's parcel, right, correct?
Yes.
So do we have an agreement that that, is that, no, but that is not, is it a? Because of the prior?
It's in the prior, it's in the prior, but um.
We would need an amendment.
I think we should get, they did reference that that was, that they signed it, but. We can ask for an updated agreement for that shared driveway.
Each one of themselves, yeah.
And, and so since they have that, is that a possibility that also begin thinking about the stiffer parking that, okay, we're already on that parcel? You're, you're already on that parcel, because the driveway is, in case there is a need. For additional parking, that that might be a location that they would, they would go to, so just, this is a thought.
Okay.
Okay.
So adding a number nineteen that we have a shared access agreement. That also stipulates maintenance um of the, the driveway. And then I added the parking. So they show, applicant show the third parking spaces to meet the total.
Yes.
And a shared parking agreement prior to building.
Uh, my other question, is this a C one or a C two? Because I see C one on, on, on. The site plan, but this, they talk about C two, we changed that, so is this C one or C two? Is it this?
C two hundred, one hundred.
It says C two, Julie.
C two, yeah.
The C two, okay, so because on the drawing. Uh, C one oh one, it says I'm doing C one.
Oh, that is probably just residual from before, because remember we had our district's back.
This chair, I, I want to make sure that I was.
Any other concerns you'd rather know any of the folks?
Could we specify that the shared? The left back lot?
I. You know, I think that it would be best if they analyze that based on their loads and operations. I wouldn't want us to. Suggest something that maybe we're not thinking about in terms of, you know, the way Dave's. Building is oriented and the way he has his cars flowing through, they, they probably have an idea. Um, of the best location in that.
Yeah, but you know, you know, the only time that I find that's when we're thinking about. The, um, operation is probably Sunday night. Because I, I know that. As you walk by there, people drop their vehicles off Sunday night to be worked on Monday. Or they may just not get it first thing Friday and they might be on Saturday, so. Um, there's a little bit of concern that I have in regards to, okay, so where are they going to park? I, you mentioned something about parking behind the service, no, I don't, I didn't see that. Behind?
The newest service.
I didn't, fine.
So, um, there's a dumpster back there and there's parking.
What, what do you mean by behind? I don't, I, I will, and even the building have, I. Such a short on the road. I, I had seen. Oh, you're talking over here, right?
Yeah.
Just behind, there's.
Oh, okay, that, that's what you're saying behind, okay, but that's, okay.
I'm saying those are the shared, it was. Um, great to get all those queued vehicle behind.
Yeah.
I don't. Might create tiny inconvenience, but. Still, I don't, I don't see that, Dave, like. Just seems like keep the.
Keep it close.
Keep the queue out there and, and like bring everything forward for desks where coming and going in high three.
Yeah. Are there any issues Laney in regards to what are? In here? No, I wanted, I wanted to see if. Um, if you could speak to some of the engineers come out from Friday New Hawk about removing some of the pavements. Related to the access driving traffic circulation number four on page two with their memo. For Friday New Hawk memo.
I think, uh, excuse me, all of those, um, refer to the property to the west.
Oh, okay.
Which isn't part of this project, right, so. All of this area here is going to remain. Um, it'd be nice if they, if you could grab that parking area here that goes out, it'd be nice if they clean that up and.
But what's important is you are removing some of the driveway on your property.
Right now, I think it goes all the way across here and we're pulling that all out and this is going to be the main drive and there's no.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I said this is a game.
I think significantly, no. Rapid flow of the bike path.
People are backing into the bike paths and they're like narrowly, it's neck down, it's now twenty percent of what it used to be.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a concern that we don't, since we don't have the fire? I mean, the report, I mean, I, I, I. I rely a lot about what, um, the fire department says, especially with, you know, with the circulation and so forth, without that, I. I don't even know if I feel comfortable with putting that on the condition is that we didn't, we don't see that as a planning commission. As part of the site plan.
I can see that concern. Um. There. You could say something like if the fire district review or is. Um. Site plan changes that are, you know, major changes, because we have major and minor. That a major change would come back to the. That if it means, you know.
That's kind of negligible in regards to.
If I received about, we could. Add some additional. Conditions. But there's a significant issue with this. Even by fire chief. That would resolve when it comes back to us, it'd come back to us. It's sort of like an initial approval.
It shouldn't hold up this element, no, because you can't do anything until, or the, or the report. With this.
I'm thinking going to hold that up. But we would call it back to do some waiting space down.
We have in our ordinance, we have minor site plan amendment and major site plan amendment. So if it's something, a minor thing. Say the building becomes smaller by ten percent for a thousand split feet, that's minor. A reduction in parking or expansion of parking up to ten spaces with minor. Movement of a building by no more than twenty-five feet. Replacement of plant materials. Changes in building materials to a comparable or higher quality. Um. Other minor changes determined by the zoning administrator. If it, if it's any of those things, it wouldn't come back to planning commission, but if it was something larger. Say they added a big, another driveway to one hundred and thirty fifth or something, that's major if, um. They cut the parking in half, major.
If the chief said he can't make these turns with his fire truck.
Yeah, and the driveway change, that would be major, you know.
My only concern in the commissioners is that. Are you willing to, um, do your site plan when we don't have a complete site plan, we don't have that and, and going forward with, um. Future site plans, are you willing to make, change that standard that we've done and not having all of that report? Because that's an important report that we've had. Uh, in other site plans and my concern is if we're not this one, we'd have to, we'd have to really think about it, um, in the future for others. And I, I just don't, I really struggle with that a little bit. That we don't have that report.
So if, and I, I guess I'll, I'll direct this to you, if. If we table this to allow you to come back in one month and. Hopefully have the fire, fire report at the same time, that shouldn't make any difference to you folks as far as your. Development of this. Um. As far as. Bidding out, obtaining, um. Or doesn't?
It, it's always one of those things where you really don't want to put the cart in front of the horse, so. You know, if we get your approval, they're, they're probably going to start bidding this out real quick. I, I know they have a tight schedule. I, I don't know what's happening with it is off the top of my head, if they've talked about it, but.
My thought is this, you, you, you've heard our concerns, there's nothing that is. Concerned you that, you know, you're just saying this might be a deal breaker, I want to move ahead of this, um, but I kind of share. That Webster's thought that this is our first run through under a new system. And do we want to start waving off the fire department report right out of the gate? Um, probably not, it was not going to hold you up. I, I guess you could probably take from this and relay to, um, the petitioner that. Um, the rest of it looks fine with, you know, the small modifications. So you couldn't start out the bid process subject to obtaining your final approval, that would give us a chance to get the fire report, not hold you up. Um, and we would have a better basis going forward about this is our process.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you can give me a preliminary approval with listing your specific items that if these are changed. You can have a final approval or something like that, that would work. I would think, you know, because I'm, I'm going to have to make the changes regardless.
Right.
If it's kind of a, you know. When, when I get these changes done, it's a rubber stamp type of thing, but at least you get to look at it one more time and if there is an issue with the fire department, then obviously. We can make that up.
So Laney, how would we word that?
Postpone.
Yep.
Well, the alternative is to approve contingent upon fire department approval. That's the alternative, isn't it?
Yeah, but I think Ms. Webster's concern is that she wants to see that. And, and since this is something that we're going to be using going forward. We don't, do we want to set a precedent that we're always going to be approving things, knowing the fire process may take a little longer? Or do we want to see that as a package as a whole to do our due diligence?
And I only bring that up because we've always had it in the past and, and it was important to us as we looked at the entire site plan that. That report along with both Laney and our engineer and the fire department, those reports were important. Um, as we looked at the site plan and we just don't have that report. So I would, well, can I move, can I make a motion? Is it, I think I can. I moved to postpone, um. Final approval, uh, due to the, the absence of the fire department and. Uh. We hope that it would come back, uh. Within a month. Unless we, uh, could we have a special meeting, so if they come back in two weeks, could we call a special meeting so that we could?
If it's noticed in time, I believe.
What, what, how long, long notice do we have to give?
Eighteen hours.
So would the commissioners were postponed and if the fire department, as soon as that report comes in, that we would, are willing to do a special meeting so that we can let them move forward? That we can look at this fire.
I like that, 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 that we, we're not holding you off.
We're always having such a mortgage, so I don't want to. I'll support that. So, so does that by definition mean preliminary approval with the conditions that we talked about, but we're withholding file approval? And the unit for the department.
Uh, I, I, I guess that's what it means, is that we're not doing, we're postponing, uh, because we don't have a complete. Uh, documents with regards to a site matter, we don't have that particular.
But then should we send like?
And, and.
Not see what?
Yes.
Conditions that we know we have applied, so we should do all of that.
I think, I think he's got a pretty good picture that anything fine up to this point, right, with the changes that we've made. We're not going to give you final approval until we get the fire department report, but if that comes in, we can turn that around.
That we would be willing to have a special meeting, uh, to look at the, uh, the entire package. Which then at that point, I thought you would, we would then. Uh, look at the conditions, um, that have been provided just by Laney. I mean, again, you know familiar, but we would, we would, uh, make the final approval with all those conditions.
You could start making some of these changes, that way.
Yes.
Like the.
But that leaves, some of those conditions might be axed out because.
So we, and we need to revise them at that point as well.
Right, yeah, if you solve some of the problems, you might list out.
Right, that definition was like.
Sure. So, so my, my question is, by definition, are we providing a preliminary approval with conditions?
No, we're waiting, we're postponing.
postponing.
Because if my, if I'm allowed to do it here, by do it here, I've got to do it for everybody and I don't want to start down that road. So taming it.
So we're postponed. And that, and that this commission is willing to have a special meeting when, when that report comes in. And we would look at the entire pack.
If the diary party secretary wants to say so.
You made a motion, did it get seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
For you?
Yes.
Okay, you.
Okay, so.
We're just very windy about it.
I couldn't find it.
We are, uh. We are, the decision of the vote is to postpone. So, on the favor say the night.
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, so Linay and Morgan, as soon as that fire report comes in.
Did we resolve the shared parking? Mission. And I, I love being repelled, I don't know, but I think this is an exa- excellent example. I don't know if the references to the end of the path. Time to say, I'm only, we all are to, to be concerned because nothing except maybe Solomonella could fill a business faster than no parking.
Well, I think we have. And that. We also directed to, to look at the different, the different parking.
Yeah.
Is that they have a plan in case things are really.
Big party.
Part of them.
It's preferred is by definition.
Yes. Yeah, so, you know, they would, want to use that if they would have to, and again, to avoid the Blue Star or the bike, you know, parking in the bike path and on the shoulder.
It's, it's card sales permitted in this parking area.
That's what I've been waiting to ask, so yes.
So you didn't vote, did you vote yet?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
We voted.
So are we still talking about this right now?
I still.
No, we, we're done, we've already, we voted.
We can't ask questions anymore.
I brought Dave back.
So we remember, you remember that writing down and.
All right. I have two, and the one is exactly what you started. Right. So that has to wait till the next special meeting.
Yes, right now.
I will.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, Mr. Chair, it's all yours.
Okay, old business, seen none. Arizona. Right, moving on to communications there. So I need, hey, we got a correspondence. Not sure. Planning Commissioner comments?
Let's start here. I tell you, I got this in the mail. Annual Michigan Association of Planning, we have a meeting, conference is in Grand Rapids this year. It's three days next month. I mean, we all get this, right? I'm, I'm going to leave, it goes to your home, I've seen the list, so anyway. When is the, it's September 25th, 6th and 7th.
Oh, I'm doing a session.
Are you? Well, no, because, no, but speaks to a broader, you know, we've approved our budget and I don't think we spent any money or we did very little on training opportunities last year. And we are all committed to regular training and updates and most of those would come from the NIP. So this will be a place to start. Now, I'm not suggesting everyone go, but because it's so close. I guess.
It's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
And what? Did you say 9/26, 9/27?
20, 25.
25.
Why doesn't it say right up front? Where it is, besides Grand Rapids. Oh, the, the, yeah, we're grand, I mean, that's where things usually are, so. And there is a reduced room rate, or you can, you can just go for a day.
Yeah. I'm just registering for Thursday.
Okay.
But my session's Wednesday.
Morgan, can I ask you, send, copy this and scan it to everyone, please?
Okay. Don't give me sass.
It's only four pages.
I usually get the magazine.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, everyone gets the magazine, right? And you're on the list now too, I don't know if it's happened. All right.
All right, anything else?
Nope. Well, like, the board report is next. I hear you missed the, oh, right, I'll look up.
Okay, all right, anyone, anyone else? No comments, no? Okay, so, County Board.
Oh, they're working, okay. So, we've actually had three board meetings and I think it was a special, not going to go through everything, but I did try to highlight items that have been your most pertinent to planning commissioners. So in June, well, Steve McPatten was appointed to the planning commission and Gordon Stamos was reappointed. Thank you, gentlemen. We had five applicants, they were all on person, we did five applicants total. We also passed our fiscal year 2025 budget back in June and we appointed supervisor Abby Bigford to the Kalamazoo Lake Sewer Water Authority. She's replacing our, we have one rep on that, two cities have two each. Our rep moved out of town, so she's going to fulfill his term. See what happens. We also hired a gentleman that a lot of you might know named Peter Stanislawski. He has been treasurer for the city of Sagatuck for 15 years. He's now our township's deputy treasurer. He's the full-time guy, which has allowed me to go into retirement. I'm in the office a couple hours a week, it depends on the week, but anyway, that was a big thing.
Do you know what my actual last name is?
Stanislawski, you got to meet him.
Maybe that.
I've never met another one. Yeah. Pull this to face.
Yeah.
He is the guy. Anyway. Well, come see Peter, he's here Mondays, he's here four days a week, he doesn't work here. That's what I speak here on my computer. Yeah, so he couldn't start until July 1st, so I stayed on, I got paid to stay in June and do all the tax prep for the summer, but it all, it's all going smoothly. We've approved an agreement with Safer Public Relations in Grand Rapids to provide public relations support to the township. They executed, you probably saw a lot of coverage yesterday and today for an effort to get a bond to purchase Pine Trail Camp. Oh, let's see. This is important tax-wise for certain people. We approved a special assessment district for Riverside roads slash dugout road. Be a 20 to. Provide them with sewer and water availability connection pipes, because they've all been unwell and subjects. 73% of the owner, how property owners along that street voted to go with the special assessment district. So that goes in effect in December. Uh, let's see, well, I just mentioned this, it's happened last week, we approved the Bond Village. Will be, the Bond Village will be on the ballot in November for the people to vote on moving forward on that issue to purchase Pine Trail Camp. To a bond. Uh, let's see. We received, this is pretty cool, $50,000 grant from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority to study zoning ordinance to support housing development projects to meet the needs of the community. And they will also execute, not execute, they will provide for us a housing action plan. A separate award was received for $258,000 for lead service line replacement cost, even though we already incurred or will incur as we move forward with that.
How, how much was that?
258,000. That's a nice one. We just, last week approved a request for proposal, we'll go out shortly to do the building exterior and site renovation, no, we've done the interior. And we'll be creating a steering committee as we do with the interior, for people to serve that. And we approved the proposal and a sidewalk along Blue Star Highway on the east side, north of the round.
To how far?
It goes to Starlight. We decided, Starlight Hotel.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And other appointments, Tracy Slace was appointed to the board review, she's been an alternate. She will now be a full-time board review person. And Denise Webster and Tammy Kerr were both reappointed to the zoning board review. So there are a lot of appointments and things like that. Any questions that we know, otherwise.
What happened then?
I would say the roundtable exceeded expectation.
Well, I should think so, there've been a couple hiccups this week.
Oh, really?
Face, well, I guess semi had some trouble yesterday.
Oh.
It happened, yeah.
Sounds a retactive.
Right. It's, but the feedback has been reselling.
My only comment out would be that people don't adhere to the 15 mile out.
Oh, yeah, well.
They fly to it.
You're like, but they aren't.
From here down, yeah.
She's kind of, so anyways, it's just, it's the learning curve, right? You know, and then the plan is to wait till fall to proceed with, because eventually, you know, we purchase that sculpture to go. Hopefully that'll happen. Maybe, but the dude grants, dude grants is on.
All right, and then, I'll do staff updates, so like.
Yeah. Just the Van Horn sand mining, they're on mining, they're working on restoration, they have until the end of October to finish that. Auto Camp.
I didn't even warn one, I saw we got the, the Azbrowski for that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's good.
Um, Auto Camp Phase 1, so they are working on getting construction plans for the first phase of Auto Camp, although I don't think it's the same name, but it's the same concept, maybe different.
Did they get, so that means they got the sewer and water, we got the control?
No, there's not that for the, for the first phase.
We don't need that, so they won't get it for the first phase. They don't get it, then.
Yeah, they don't get a broker space, but we are going to be getting that escrow payment, it's 250,000. All of, all of the promises are, are being met. But we're allowing them to proceed with that first phase. Morris Creek, it's a project we're still working on that was previously approved, so we're working through some of the utility and private road items. And.
Can you remind us where, what that is?
Yeah. Morris Creek is. I can send you the plans, I don't have the exact address, but it intersects here, it's right off of Blue Star. So when are you going to find it for me? Thank you.
That, you know, Morris Creek is the same as Gosar Creek that was behind my house.
Correct.
The name just changes, but, oh.
It is just south of 134th, right? I can come with the copies.
There's trash, right?
North of the Starlight. So it's over here.
So a little bit of a joke.
Is it north of that? 134th. I think it's right over there behind, just.
Which project?
South of.
Well, it's the creek, yeah.
I think that's right then.
It's still Morris Creek.
Yeah, it's just.
So who's the owner of the, is it?
Oh, my gosh.
Is it?
It's not, uh, it's not Dan or Ned or Ned.
It's not Bernie Merkelism.
It is.
Oh, it is Bernie.
I know where it is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is it right, it's right there?
You're close, yeah, I think it's just north of the creek.
North of the creek.
Yeah.
And, and so that.
So on, it's on Blue Star.
It's on Blue Star, yeah, they would be building a private road. And so they're, they're working on utility connection.
And it's the ru, it's the road for one home or?
It's four, four. Yeah, I'm happy to sell those plans, but like. But not a lot of them happening recently, which is why I'm very. And then we did have, we have a big ordinance of course, or a zoning enforcement issue across from the Dog Park. It's an industrial property that was bought by a excavator who proceeded to remove trees, large white pine trees, widened a driveway, take loads of gravel and concrete back there, thinks or tends to build a pond and do crushing and we got an application today that was incomplete. Including the check was actually completely filled out, did not submit the escrow and just their plans do not have enough detail, they're not sealed. We do not have what is required for that level of preview.
So where do they want to put, they want to put a, a division?
They want to put in a pond and mineral extraction and concrete processing. That they.
Would that be committed?
It's industrial, so it needs special land use for mineral extraction or that type of industrial material processing.
So that would come down eventually?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it right down the old landfill?
Yes.
Right, it's around, all on.
Okay.
I don't expect you to know the answer to this, but I, I was just curious, I noticed there was some tree removal that was going on in North Shore.
Yep.
Oh, yes, I do know about that.
They say they remove, they put new trees up.
Correct, so those are invasive species, they're, are they scotch pies, I'm going to say the word. They're scotch pie that the D or eagle required to be removed. It was part of their permit was, those need to be removed and replaced with approved trees. Doesn't matter what they're doing.
They're hard to view on different times.
He said, you might get some questions, so I want you to know, so I haven't answered.
Yeah, so that, that, yes, a lot of people in our neighborhood asked it, because you heard of grinding and you heard, you heard all that.
Believe it was the permit probably to do those store, those commercial buildings.
Oh, okay, okay.
Uh, what's going on with that spot? We gave them an extension.
We gave them the extension.
And you have a reading?
No. Yeah, Jars, I've got an enforcement item. Someone brought to my attention the temporary sign, so they have those.
Yep.
Feather signs, there are three new banners someone mentioned, so I reached out to Leon. Leon Lawrence is our new, um, he's helping with building, the building department, he's doing enforcement, he's fantastic. So he's been helping out on those matters and then things cleared up, like some of the signage issues, Gordon, Mary, your house, Leon was working on those. So. And then, and folks can notice, I don't know if anyone goes to Jars or if you happen to notice, I was in town for the Venetian Festival and on my way out of town, Jars, the open sign, it was 10:00 PM. And I thought, oh, they have to close at nine. I didn't go in. I, I probably should have just to see, but they did reply and said that they were closed. They were just doing orders for people that were already in the store or staff. So if anyone is out and about after nine or needing to, to visit, maybe check for me, because I'm not always in town after.
What's happening with the old jars?
Nothing right now, nothing right now, they're closed, they're, they're not using it, they're keeping their license there just in case. I think they're kind of seeing what, you know, what, what the shifts are with their operation.
Yeah, how about the Penny Royal issue that, you know.
Penny Royals?
It's more than black.
It was closed. Uh, we conducted a thorough analysis of all of their parking, we reviewed all of the approved plans. We, Leon and I went out and we measured every parking space and everything is built to approved plans and to ordinance and and, and, you know, in terms of their, their other matters that's between those neighbors.
You know, unfortunately, they might, but you know, they're such a successful building down business that we're still having some issues on Blue Star, so I mean, there's nothing more we can do.
So.
It's just like parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, that legal I've noticed the other days, that's not.
So the, the, I think the latest is that they're trying to get the township road commission to post no parking on Blue Star.
That is county.
It's actually.
Pardon me, the county, that's the county, county that's supposed to, Phillips County Road.
But it's actually the state police that comes to, that we heard. So we, we passed a, the board passed a resolution that they wanted the parking enforcement on Blue Star and then that goes to the county and road commission and the county sent it to the Sheriff's Department. So now they are linking up. At road commission and the county sent it to the sheriff's department, so now they are linking up. Because they would be the ones doing the picketing and enforcement.
Well, my question is related, and I, and you know, it'd be nice to begin on Blue Star, is there, is there anything that we can do to help them? So that they, we help this business um thrive. For uh to burn parking, I mean, it really is about, is there another place that they could go to do something more?
I mean, Daniel, the the Blue Star Committee, we're, you know, looking at ways to, you know, is there underutilized parking nearby? And part of this idea of the sidewalk being built is perhaps there's a way we can, we can work with business owners, there's a nearby storage. Facility, storage barns, they have parking that goes unused. If we were to have a sidewalk and it's safe for people to get from there to Penny Royal, would that be an overflow? So we're working, what we can in terms of that connection piece. Um, we can't make anyone, you know, share their parking.
And but is there something that we can do to help them have, at least have that discussion that wants us there, is that?
Once that sidewalk is built, yeah.
We can have a discussion.
Do I understand, right, that we we brought through all these steps, it's now on the sheriff's hands. Are they going to determine if they are going to enforce that or not?
Yeah, it's up to the sheriff.
It's up to them to decide.
Yeah, the state or the police.
Well, I guess it's.
Why didn't they get that choice? They've gone through all these steps to get it to them.
I think because they, it's, it's, it's county road commission property. And that is the entity that enforces vehicle, the vehicle code. So they also set the speeds, the state, state police, they know this, they set the speeds, they do the speed enforcement. Ticketing with parking.
To kind of piggyback on what Denise is saying, are we? I, I don't go there very often, but I know they've got a lot of parking in the back. And I think it was this weekend I saw there were cars that were three deep on Blue Star.
Oh, they're, oh, on Blue Star?
On Blue Star Highway and I, and I just wondered, I was wondering in my head, is it more of a, of a directional, like, people not know where to park? I, is, because I just wondered, do they have open spaces back there and?
They have sunings.
Yeah, they have this way back, you know, they have a lot. It is way back, so I'm just curious if the car just aren't making it back there. I've never stopped to look, but just.
I can really bet you put a no parking sign on Blue Star Highway. That more cars would venture further back looking for it, it's kind of like a dog.
Yeah.
But until the county posts that sign.
Yep.
We'll never know.
Do they inform the, the clients, the customers? Like the sun.
They do, they have a lot of, they have done a lot.
Not, not only is it dangerous for people to drive it down the Blue Star, when there are cars parked there, but just pulling out of that place on a Sunday afternoon. You can't see, and you have to like hope that there isn't a car five lengths down the road as you jump out and then there's someone in your.
There's also.
It's inevitable that there's going to be a collision.
There are concerns though that if you put no parking signs right there, that then that tells the the driver, oh, well, I can park where there aren't signs.
That's the obvious thing.
And so then, so there are these, this domino effect and a lot.
Oh, because sometimes it's parking, Ivy, Ivy House has. It's an overflow.
Anyway, that's all I know.
So do you have anything I can help you with, um, I, I understand there was a sale of the property on Old Elegan where we've had just an eyesore. For years.
I'm sorry, I don't know enough to.
No, that's.
Can I give this report?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so, so the oddly property sold is the Hansel Realtor, a local Realtor out of pollen. The occupant has vacated the property, he moved in with his mom, still in the township, but off of Dale Court. Um, and the, so the sewer has been, is being addressed currently, the septic system that failed. And they are removing all the garbage from the house, um, the barn, to my knowledge, was cleaned out, but they're working on the garage in the house right now.
And did the house just get moving, true?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, the Realtor wants to turn around, flip it, sell it to a local family.
Right, so that.
Five years.
Five years.
Years.
Which one?
I have a little issue on myself. What, I think someone mentioned jars, if you're interested, they've invited staff and board members to their grand opening. It's uh Friday, September thirteenth. At this, eight thirty in the morning. It's kind of odd.
I think you should send a country board meeting right after that, because that would be a very interesting meeting.
We'll have a brainstorming session.
There's free samples. All right. That's, that's update of jars. So if we're done with the uh staff and primary updates, then we'll move into the second public comment period. Uh.
Done.
Yeah, yeah, anybody on? No?
Let me say, motion to a turn.
No, no.
All those public comment and yes.
Move to a journey, I'll support.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everyone.